This evening will be led by Scott Mumper, the Assistant Pastor for Light Christian Center. And then we'll have our American Pledge led by Councilmember Ashley Davis and our Texas Pledge by no other than Richard Garvey.
Heavenly Father, we just come before you today with thankful hearts for this opportunity to serve the community. We ask for your wisdom and guidance in the decisions made here tonight. May each council member be granted clarity of mind, humility of spirit, and a heart focused on the well-being of every citizen. Help us to listen and respect you, speak truthfully, and lead with integrity. May our actions reflect justice, compassion, and unity, seeking the good of all people, especially the most vulnerable among us. Bless this city, its leaders, first responders, workers, and every resident. Let peace, safety, and prosperity rest on our neighborhoods. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you Pastor. Thank you Councilmember Davis. Next, we're going to have a presentation and penning of successful Alvin Police Department promotional candidates. Chief Lee, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On July twenty-sixth, we held a civil servant local examination. And the three officers were about to promote and have been given two ranks, where the top's ranked of the group. This is a young group there, the core of our department, the department. We have a ten year, strong, and now it's called the Happy Year. So we have a strong department. And we need people like these in our place to promote, to show the way. I have very high hopes for this group, and I think they do big things at all. As I follow up, we'll have persons from our panel present them with bags, like their person pin them. Then I'll give them their certificate of promotions, and we'll do photos, we'll do photos to do photos, and actually if there's all three of them, we'll do a group photo, if that's okay with you all.
Yes, sir.
All right, Justin Morrison, being pinned by his wife, Mylent Morrison. Red flag. Ryan Grinch and being pinned by his wife, Sarah Grinch. Inside Joe. Congratulations.
All right, and last but not least, Nicole Bushy being pinned by her mother Linda Bushy. All right, if I can get all the officers that were pinned back up here, council. Congratulations. Congratulations to the three officers on their promotions. We have a great police department, we're super proud of you guys. Next, we're going to have a presentation of the City of Alvin News Court Fines and Delinquent Tax collections. Report by Mike Darlow of Purdue Brandon Fielder Collins and Mott.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hello.
I have a treat for you tonight by associate Aiden Bartley, who's going to give you the report.
Okay.
Thank you. Ask him a lot of questions.
All right. Thank you. It's great to be here in the city of Alvin.
You're on the phone.
All right. Today, we're going to talk about everyone's favorite topic, delinquent property taxes and fines and fees. If you want to answer how complicated you want me to get. So we actually just got turned over the 2024 taxes back on July first, and so far, we've mailed over 10,000 letters countywide. We have a great working relationship with Kristen and her staff. And then I'd also like to remind everyone that our services are at no cost to the city. We don't get paid if we don't collect. So our job is to collect.
Mike never had these problems.
Yeah. There we go. All right. Perfect. So when this report was ran a couple of weeks ago, we had a delinquent tax base for all tax years due for the base penalties of $751,000. Happy to report that just today, we had a case that was set for trial tomorrow. We actually got a check for $9,000 that was owed to the city. We also got a commitment to pay earlier today. There was a property that was delinquent in years past. They paid the property taxes, it went delinquent again, and the bank foreclosed on them on Tuesday. And so the bank has agreed to pay the $8,000 to the city, so that should be coming shortly. So that $751 that you see up there is going to keep getting shrunk. So what we have here is a bunch of categories, and that gives us an overview of where these accounts are and gives us an idea of where to work and start concentrating our efforts. And so the first category is action pending. A majority of these are going to be those 2024 tax years. And so that's going to be where we're making our phone calls, we're mailing our letters, we're reaching out to lien holders, we're trying to do everything we can to get those taxes paid. If the letters and the phone calls don't work, then we move it into litigation, where we'll work up the suit, we'll file a lawsuit, we'll serve all the defendants, we'll serve the lien holders, we'll set it for trial. We'll have trial tomorrow, and then if they still don't pay, then we'll eventually set it for tax sale. So we had a tax sale on Tuesday. Normally, there are a lot of properties in the city, or few properties on the city on the tax sales, but as on this Tuesday, there weren't any properties on the city. If you haven't already, you can sign up for our email list at pbfcm.com and get notified of our tax sales. And it gives you the results and then also the properties that are up there. Next up, we have deferrals. So this is going to be your over sixty-five on your resident homestead. And so people, taxpayers, that certain sort of circumstances that meet happen, they're allowed to defer their property taxes. Penalties and interest still accrue, just at a lower rate. And so we don't actively work the deferral accounts because we can't under the Texas tax code, but we do monitor it. Once that deferral goes away, then we'll take the appropriate action. Except we have a dollar range chart, so we work the roll from the top down. We try to get the most amount of money in the door the quickest. And then we have a tax year chart. So you can see that the majority of the taxes due are the 2024 tax year, and that's good because the newer they are, the easier they are to collect. And then the amount due shrinks as the years go by. Except I've included some historical data charts, but I'm going to skip ahead to the 2023 tax year because that was our most recent full tax year. So we were turned over an initial outstanding base tax of $355,000. In the first year, we were able to collect over sixty-seven percent or $239,000 of that. Now for the 2024 tax year that just got turned over to us, the city levied over $17 million. The tax office was able to correct over ninety-seven point six four percent, leaving a base tax remaining of over $410,000, but that's just two to three percent of the total levy. Now, if we go back to this year, that's sixty-seven percent of that two to three percent that's remaining that we collected. Are there any questions on the tax portion? All right. We also do fine and fee collection reports. So you guys may remember the warrant roundup or the case resolution program, but we mailed over a thousand of these letters back in April to people who've came through the city of Alvin, they've gotten a ticket, and they haven't paid their court costs. And so getting them back, driving them back to the courthouse. So we mailed over a thousand of these letters. In total, since we've been collecting in this program, we've had over $4 million turned over to us. Between cash and non-cash resolution, we've got a clearance rate of over seventy percent. Now, you guys may remember from when Mike was here that we were recently rolling out texting. Happy to announce that that is like up and running. And we've actually made over six, almost fifteen thousand, or over fifteen thousand, almost sixteen thousand texts that we've sent. And we're getting a good response to that, driving people to the court and calling like, hey, I got this text from y'all. And so I think it's a good thing because everyone's got a cell phone, everyone's looking at their cell phone. When they're getting notified, they're getting reminded of where they're at. So we've included a couple of maps from skip to the last map. So this shows you everyone that's came through the city of Alvin, gotten a ticket, and went back home. And so our job is to find these people and drive them back here and take care of their business. And so whether they're in Sioux City, Iowa, or Miami, Florida, we're going to find them and get them back here, so. Are there any questions on the fine and fee? All right, well, thank you all for your business.
Thank you, you guys did a great job for us.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we will go into public comment. I don't see that we have any Dixie, no? Thank you. Then we will go into the consent agenda, concerning with Councilman Garvey, anything you would like to remove from the consent agenda?
No, Mayor.
No, sir.
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Items approved on the consent agenda are the minutes from July seventeenth City Council workshop, minutes from July seventeenth City Council meeting. Item C, ordinance twenty-five Q amending Chapter twenty-four traffic article one in general of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alvin, Texas to include the creation of section twenty-four dash seventeen addressing solicitation involving motor vehicles and section twenty-four eighteen establishing permit requirements for charitable organizations, providing for penalties, providing for severability, providing for publication, and setting forth other provisions related thereto. Item D, a final plat of Kendall Lake, Section twelve, a planned unit development, a subdivision of fifty-one point five-three acres of land. Item E, a final plat of Preservation Creek Phase Two, Section four being a planned unit development of eighteen point nine-eight acres. Item F, a final plat of Preservation Creek Phase Two, Section five being a planned unit development of sixteen point nine-seven acres. Item G, a master preliminary plat of Walton Tract, Phase one, a planned unit development being two hundred and fourteen point four-three acres. And item H, acknowledged receipt of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five capital improvement program quarterly report. Mayor?
Moving on to other business, item A, consider ordinance twenty-five R, an ordinance set by the City Council of the City of Alvin, Texas authorizing issuance and sale of City of Alvin, Texas Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series two thousand twenty-five, levying a tax and providing for the security and payment thereof, and enacting other provisions related thereto.
Yes, Mayor and Council, you have before you this ordinance, which if approved, would authorize the issuance and sale of certificates of obligations to fund a new city hall. Our financial advisor received the bids from the sale this morning and is here to present the results of the bids of the sale and to request your consideration to approve the ordinance. We also have Jonathan Frails here, if you have any legal questions concerning the sale. And I'll ask James to come and explain the results of the bids.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of council, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Again, for the record, I'm James Gilli with U.S. Capital Advisors, representing you as this city's financial advisor. You may recall on June fifth, the city adopted a notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation. In the time, past couple of months, our group along with Mr. Frails began preparations for the sale. We prepared a offering documents and advertised those, the sale of the bonds to investors across the country. And as, and you have in front of you a packet, blue cover, summary of the bond sale. Bids were due at ten AM this morning. And we took, these bids were in a competitive auction type sale, and as of the deadline at ten AM, we'd received a total of six bids. And the best bid went to RW Baird, based out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. And they submitted an initial true interest cost of four point seven four six 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 two. The next best bid was a very close, very close sale. You'll see that the next best bid from Hilltop was just less than a basis point over Baird. The second page shows another distribution of the bids, and you'll see just how tight the sale was. The spread between the high and low bids was just, I'm sorry, less than, just under ten basis points. And so we'd like to see this type of tight grouping because that tells us that the city got the best, best price for its bonds in the market today. And I'm sure you all know that there's been a lot of economic uncertainty, there's been a lot of volatility in the market, and so investors are reluctant to put their money anywhere. But when we see, when we get a result like this with six bids, it tells us that was an excellent result for the city and it speaks to the city's strong financial position. The final debt service numbers are included in the rest of the packet, and the bonds were rated through Standard and Poor's a double A, stable outlook. As part of the process, we went through a rating call with Standard and Poor's, and I'd like to commend the city staff on being very well-prepared for that and like to commend the council for maintaining, making hard budgetary decisions. I encourage you every time I'm up here to keep, keep making those hard decisions, but certainly should, if you have some time, read through the rating report, which is included on page twelve. If, assuming the ordinance is approved this evening, the transaction should close in about thirty days, at which time the city will have funds in hand to start working on the new city hall. So I'll entertain any questions, if there's any legal questions, I'll turn it over to Mr. Frails. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate your hard work, thank you. Any questions? Comments?
What do you, how do you think um, the city would be affected if the ordinance doesn't pass tonight in the future? If we want to issue certificates of obligation at a later date?
Uh, that's an excellent question. Um, if, I would say that that it could give the city a reputation, a, a, a bad reputation in the market. The city's historically performed very well in the market over the past few decades. And that might indicate to underwriters that uh, it's, it's a large amount of capital, capital that they are committing. They're setting aside um, to, to offer to buy the city's bonds. And so they put a lot of time and, and effort and, and their resources. And so if, if this, they bid on the bonds, if the city decided not to approve the ordinance, it may discourage this under, uh RW Baird from bidding on the future and certainly other, other underwriting syndicates. Because this is kind of a lost opportunity um, for, for Baird.
Any question? Any others?
What does that, what does that mean? Is that purely speculative or like we're saying it could possibly hurt us? Like, do we have previous records of that?
Well, it just is a.
In other words, there's, there's, there's some interest on not voting for the bond. I just want to be sure.
Certainly. If I could maybe put, put in perspective this way, on the, from the past, the city's outstanding, seven outstanding bond issuances. Well, including this one being the eighth, uh, could be the eighth. RW Baird has bid, uh, has been the winning bidder on four of them. So RW Baird is, is a large, um, is a big presence, president, big presence in the municipal bond market. And the council's under no obligation to accept the bid. But I think that that might, it certainly could give Baird pause for participating in the future. And we always want, as I, as the reason I pointed out that chart of the bids is that it emphasized that we got six bids, which is an excellent result. Is the more participation we can get in the market across the country. We had investors from six different states across the country. So we want as much participation as possible. Uh, because that tells us that you're going to get the best bid. These underwriters competing against each other. So the, the more, if there's any underwriters or investors that start to drop out of any future cities bit, uh, bond offerings, it could. I think it could certainly negatively impact the city's ability to either obtain capital or obtain the most favorable interest rates in the market.
You said Baird is, when you owes a bid on four?
That's right.
Out of the last how many?
Eight, including this one.
So the, the basis points, the ten basis points that you see in the grouping, tight grouping, roughly on a twenty-five million dollar bond. What kind of interest are we looking at difference wise? Ballpark?
Hate doing math uh, on, on the spot. Um.
Chris.
Chris? So it bears a big dog, basically.
Yes, sir.
And if we bail out on the eleventh hour on them, they've got a lot of reach.
That, that's right. That's right. And.
And that would impact us financially in the future if we try to go out and obtain certificate obligations in the future. Which costs us a lot of money in interest.
I would say that, that's a possibility would, it would add, could add to the city's borrowing, borrowing costs. And I don't have in front of me, but the city's revenue bonds, I believe that Baird has also been an active participant in the lease one, a couple of those bid, uh, bids.
Procedurally, is it, and maybe this is more of a question for Onru, but uh, do we always put the bond out before we vote on the ordinance? Or is, is it, is it common for them to bid on the bond risking the ordinance not passing? Because we're, we're voting on it after the bond's been uh, bid on?
Well.
Yeah, it's contingent. They, so they know it's contingent on, on the vote tonight. Yeah. So nothing is final until. So, and they understand that investors.
There's no way to know for sure if it would negatively affect us. It just depends on the market at that time. If we, if we decide to, if we decide to not pass the ordinance tonight and then issue certificates of obligation at a later date. There's no way to know for sure or quantify any kind of negative effect of doing that.
That's right. It, you know, counterfactually, it's hard to prove. But I, my, my feeling is that again, it could discourage Baird and, you know, by association, some other investors if they saw. You know, perhaps one time, maybe get away with it, but if it was continuing pattern, I, I think it could affect the participation. And so the, the more, more participation you have, the better price you're gonna get.
Is this, have, has the city ever decided to not go through with issuing certificates of obligation? As far as you can remember?
To my, to my knowledge, my recollection, I don't know that it's ever gotten to the, the point where the ordinance was being considered, but.
So if we were to vote against ordinance tonight, it certainly wouldn't be a pattern for this city to do that. Because it would be the first time that we could remember.
I mean, everything is kind of speculative, I mean.
Is there a um, a time constraint if it didn't pass and you wanted to take, take it to vote again? Would you have to wait a certain amount of period of time before you do that again? Or is there any restriction?
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Frails. I'm with Bracewell. We serve as your bond counsel. Um, on that question, if you chose not to proceed with the COs this evening, we would have to start the process again. We'd come back with a notice of intent resolution. We'd begin from the very start and go through that process again. So that, that would be the, the general way to approach it. Did it, would it keep you from having other approaches to financing? No, but you'd have to start at the beginning of any of those approaches.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve ordinance twenty-five R. An ordinance by the City Council of the City of Alvin, Texas authorizing the issuance and sale of the City of Alvin, Texas Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series twenty twenty-five, levying a tax and providing for the security and payment thereof and enacting other provisions related thereto.
Second. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Davis, DeKaiser and Moore voting no.
Next, item B, we'll have a presentation by Dr. Sambidi, the Assistant Director of Data Analytics and Research of HGAC on population data research and projections for the region, Missouri County and the city of Alvin ETJ. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and attendees. My name is Pramod Sambidi. I'm the Assistant Director for Data Analytics and Research at the Houston-Galluston Area Council. Uh, today I will be talking about the regional growth forecast that was released by HGAC uh, in beginning of the year. So HGAC is a regional planning agency and Councilmember Martin Willis serves on that committee and represents Alvin um, at the board. So our HGAC serves thirteen counties, one thirty-four cities. And we are home for seven point nine million people, three point seven million jobs. And HGAC also serves as a metropolitan planning organization, which includes eight counties that you see on the map. Um, the current forecast is released in uh, earlier this year. So um, the eight counties, if you look at the population for the eight county region, over the last two decades, our region has added uh, one point two million in each decade. So from twenty twenty to twenty fifty, we expect that our population will be home for ten point seven million people by twenty fifty. And here are the components of population change. So population change is mainly by births, deaths and net migration. And if you look at our historic change in the region, uh, from nineteen eighties oil, we had an oil bust, we had, we had a negative net migration. And then if you look at two thousand and six, we have an influx of people coming uh, from New Orleans to the region. And we have a lot of population there and then followed by the recession. And the energy boom between twenty eleven to twenty fifteen, we have a lot of people coming into our region. And then it's followed by the energy downturn and the COVID happened in twenty twenty. And you can also see the increase in deaths during, during the COVID times. So in spite of the uh, the contractions and the expansions, our region is expected to grow um, constantly. And the growth is expected to lower the, in, close to twenty fifty. So here is the population projections by age. Uh, if you look at the, the top category, it's a population sixty-five plus. So the share of population sixty-five plus is expected to go from twelve percent in twenty twenty to eighteen percent in twenty fifty. So it's gonna go, uh, increase significantly. And also if you look at the median age, it's gonna go from thirty-five to thirty-nine by twenty fifty. If you look at the uh, population kids, population is gonna go down from twenty-six to twenty-two percent. So our population is aging. And if you look at the um, population projections by race, uh, the Hispanic population is expected to grow from thirty-seven percent to forty-five percent by twenty fifty. Uh, whereas the Anglo population or the white population is expected to decline from thirty-four percent to twenty-one percent by twenty fifty. The African American population is expected to remain the same. Uh, here is the population projections by county. So for example, if you look at Harris County, Harris County is expected to add one point four million people in the next thirty years. And Montgomery County and Fort Bend County together are also expected to add one point four million people. And Brazoria County is expected to double its population from three hundred and seventy-two thousand to seven hundred and seventy thousand by twenty fifty. And remaining other counties are also expected to grow significantly. So he, as part of the forecast, we also collect planned developments in the region. So this is the planned developments in the eight county region. And the dark grids indicates uh, housing units more than five thousand. And if you look at, for example, Brazoria County, we already have forty-seven thousand units planned in the next fifteen to twenty years. That's quite significant. So here is the distribution of population in twenty twenty to twenty fifty. As I said, the, the region is expected to add three point seven million people in the next thirty years. Um, and uh, so imagine our region has four rings that we have the loop, we have Beltway Eight. We have Grand Parkway and we have area outside of Grand Parkway. If you look at nineteen eighty and nineteen ninety, Beltway Eight is dominating the region in terms of population. But from twenty, two thousand onwards, you can see the, the area between Beltway Eight and Grand Parkway is picking up. And it's growing very significantly. And from twenty twenty onwards, the area outside of Grand Parkway is also expected to grow significantly. So in twenty twenty, we have one point six million people living outside of Grand Parkway. But by twenty fifty, we expect that there will be three point four million peoples living outside of Grand Parkway. Uh, so that's the regional data. And if you focus on Alvin, so here is the Alvin city boundary as well as the ETJ for Alvin. And um, here is the population distribution for the Alvin and area, including the ETJ from twenty twenty to twenty fifty. And here is the growth. Uh, so if you look at, so this is, this map is basically showing you the growth in the next thirty years in the Alvin region. And you can see the growth along the north of Alvin as well as the west, uh, south of Iowa Colony area. And uh, so if you look at the overall population, um, the population, the Alvin ETJ is expected to add uh, one hundred and eighteen thousand people in the next thirty years. And uh, if you look at that city distribution as well as the ETJ, so that's at quite a lot of population. And especially in the ETJ, you can see two hundred and seventy-six percent increase. That's quite significant. So there are a lot of master plan communities being planned in, in this region. And this is the job growth. Uh, so the region is expected to add thirty job, thirty thousand jobs in the next thirty years. Um, in addition to the um, population growth, so this is, we have online web mapping applications. So this is the regional land use information system. And this is accessible for public and they can go to the website and click on that information. And you'll see the information on parcel level land use, um, and as well as the population growth by census tract and the uh, traffic analysis zones as well. And we also have a regional demographic snapshot. So you can pick a city and it will show you the uh, population for the city as, and the historic growth, as well as population by age, income, language and everything. So all this data is freely available on our website and people can um, browse it and get the information and download the data. And here is one other tool. It, it kind of tells you uh, people living in Alvin, where are they going to work? So this map, the green area shows the kind of the Alvin area. And the red dots or the red hexagon shows where they are working. So most of the people are working in Alvin. Some of their are commuting to Lake City, some of them are commuting to Pearland. And some of them are going to the medical center as well as downtown. So that's, there's a lot of information that is available for free. Uh, you can always go to the website. And we also have information on crash, like safety. So this is all, again, accessible on our website. Um, so just wanted to show you, share with you all. So here is a link to uh, the growth forecast as well as the link to the application that I just shared. And here's my contact information. And if you have any questions or need any information, uh, please let me know. And that's all I have to share and I'm open for questions.
Thank you very much. So um, I will say, Mayor and Council, I had um, Dr. Sambidi, um, gave this presentation several months ago with HGAC. The minute he was done, he had a, a enormous amount of questions uh, by other members of HGAC. As well as um, um, everybody pretty much licking their lips going, this is, this is great data. This is great information. They, that, and it was, it's a tool and applaud HGAC. And they're, me being, us being a part of that organization and being able to use this information and this data as we strategically plan for stuff out to twenty, twenty fifty. Very good, very good presentation, very good data that we could use. And um, I definitely wanted, extended, I think I was one of the first ones that basically said, hey, you need to come down here and, and do a presentation for, for you all to see. Because that plays into a lot of our, um, how we strategically plan for the next thirty, thirty-five, fifty years out from now when it comes to uh, first responders, um, emergency services, where we need to uh, focus our attention and, and stuff. Because this is ever-changing. This stuff can change within the next five years based upon the economy and various things. But, so this is just a not, not a one stop. This is, this is stuff that they definitely do. And I, I really like how HGAC has put forth this, and it's just not only first responder, it's ride share program. It's um, various other uh, initiatives that um, are sponsored by HGAC as well as the state and federal um, grant funding and, and stuff that, on the direction that we need to go. So looking at that data, looking at that information as other cities, other jurisdictions, um, we're in competition with as well. They see this, they know that data, they, they have it. But we can work on it to where it's an advantage to us, but then it's also indirectly or indirectly as well. Because as those other areas grow, people don't want that feel, that hustle and bustle of the city. They'll come to our area as well. So definitely very good presentation and thank you. And I wanted them to actually see that and hear, hear from them instead of me just talking. Thank you for hanging up. Doctor, thank you very much. Great, great data. Uh, next we will move on to item C, consider the declaration of a zero point zero six five one acre city, city utility easement across a Briscoe Park property for the construction of a sanitary sewer main line to serve the Franklin's Reserve subdivision and authorize the city manager to sign the easement document upon legal review.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, what you have before you is um, an easement to basically be able to extend the sanitary sewer line up by um, the Alvin Rec Center um, along thirty-five for the Franklin Reserve, the Franklin's Reserve development that was approved recently. They'll be extending the line at their cost as a part of their development. Um, it'd go down the bypass and then cut across uh, the Briscoe Golf, Disc Golf Park in order to get to the north side of their property. And the need for the easement is to be able to cross the, the pipeline at both perpendicular to the pipeline as well as in order to meet the crossing clearance of the pipeline so that the line, our line doesn't have to be so deep. Because where the pipeline goes under the highway, it gets really deep and it's not, we're not able to make grade. And we don't have to do another lift station and whatnot to be able to make that crossing and serve that development. So they will be doing the construction. We are just dedicating the easement to be used as a utility easement. We have consulted with the Parks Director on how this could possibly affect the use of the Disc Golf Park. There's nothing currently planned in that area. You'll see it kind of cuts along the southwest corner of the park currently. So it's, and there'll be no structures above ground. It will just be a ten foot wide utility easement.
Very good. Any questions or comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve the declaration of a zero-point-zero-six-five-one acre city utility easement across the Briscoe Park property for the construction of a sanitary sewer mainline to serve the Franklin's Reserve subdivision, and authorize the city manager to sign the easement document upon legal review.
Second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, next, item D, consider ordinance twenty-five S, an ordinance releasing approximately twenty-two and a half acres of land from the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Alvin, Texas, providing findings of fact containing a severability clause and providing for other matters related thereto.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this request came from a company, oh, Mike, better, better, Bueller. Um, from New Edge Power, or New Edge Renewable Power. Um, they are a company that operates, uh, battery storage facilities across the United States. Um, they, um, have purchased this property, they are going to be using this property for large-scale battery storage. They have requested release from the ETJ, um, primarily because of dealing with two entities for them. They already have to deal with Brazoria County and, um, dealing with the city. They're all out of state, so dealing with two entities, um, proves, or could prove to be cumbersome for them. Um, this property is located, it's on the other side, this side, of Resoff Park. That, it's over that, that area. Um, three representatives, all from different states, from the company are all here, if you have questions. Um, and so, I have this, as we've talked before, um, the legislature didn't really give you all any option to object or to do anything with these, um, but they are here, if you have questions about their intent and what they're, and what they're doing.
Say again, I, I don't blame them for doing this, for vacating ETJ, but I'll vote against it for a different reason, and I encourage everybody else to.
And, and also, just so you know, Councilman Moore, I have explained that to them, um, explained sort of the, um, the challenges that you mini- municipalities are facing with this law, um, and, and our specific concerns, or, or this council's specific concerns with, um, the ETJ, because we are in a different position than a lot of municipalities, in the sense that we have a lot of ETJ. So, um, what that means is that we are getting a lot more of these requests than any other city so far that I've talked to, and it's been quite a few that I've talked to, so.
Anything else?
So, um, same thing, it's just to echo what, what Councilman Moore is saying, but, um, also as well is, I think it's just the subdividing of the property, or combining the property, because afterwards, I mean, if, I mean, there's no benefit to it, whether it's in the city or not in the city, which basically it's not going to be in the city, county's gonna take care of it, but, um, that's it. It's, it's really just the development. I, I really, see, and I'll, I'll reiterate this is, as well, because when stuff like this comes into, I think that if there was an agreement or some mechanism in place to where if, because it's in the ETJ, there's no other service, and it just comes down to a plating issue, or something like that, then, then we should somehow waive those fees or waive those requirements, because some other jurisdiction is taking up that burden and that responsibility. Um, that's.
And, and, and that has been presented, um, that's what we have talked about, is there any, you know, it's, it's not a matter of fees, it's not a matter of that, it's.
And this is probably our first one where it's actually a business, when all the other ones were potential residential development.
True. Yeah. Yeah, you're more than hap- that, that's why they're here, they all flew in from out of states today.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm happy to have you talk to them, if, if you, if you have specific, uh, excuse me, specific questions for them about that.
Yeah.
Um, but, but those are the kinds of things that, that, you know, we've talked about before, um, and those are the specific things that, you know, as far as, I mean, I don't think that the city can waive plating requirements, um, and if, if that's something that council wants to do as an, as an ordinance revision to, um, the, I mean, there's, there's certain things like that. I, otherwise, it's, it's, we don't have the authority necessarily to offer, you know, that unless council wants to make ordinance revisions to figure out how to deal with some of these things, but, um, I'm not sure that it's necessarily going to fix any of the issues. I don't, I don't know whether it would or not, but, um, you know, simply, you know, as far as anything that either Paul or I could offer, you know, we don't have that, I don't have that authority to say, "Oh, well, we'll just go ahead and waive any plating requirements," you know, in, or, or waive anything with our subdivision, I don't have the authority to do that.
Yeah. Cool.
You three are there? So, are y'all familiar with what, how, what we're talking about? We understand what y'all are doing, we understand why you're doing it, but we don't agree with the legislature as a whole. So, as a common practice amongst ourselves, we are denying all of those requests in case this litigation goes through and it's overturned, we have an opportunity to go out and grab it back. So, nothing personal, I hope you understand, but thank you for being here.
But i- is the concern, if I can ask, if, what y'all could step up? Is, is the concern that of us potentially, possibly down the road annexing y'all? Or is it something prior to that?
Really quick, sir, if, Stephen, if you want to just introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm happy to. Um, thank you for the opportunity, yes, Steve Barna, head of development at New Edge Power. Yeah, for us, this is really a business decision. Um, the way we understand the current regs, or we have to go through a plating and subdivision exercise, both with the city and the county, uh, doubling the work, doubling the timeline. So, for us, it's a business decision. We understand that the, uh, legislature passed this in twenty-twenty-three session. Um, we understand the tension between you and the Capitol, and how your hands may, may or may not be tied. But again, we have to evaluate every project we work on, and every process, permitting process, right, and choose what's best for us as a business. Having a shorter timeline is very important in our line of work.
Okay. And then Martin's in, is there, then, is there anything we could have done to entice you to stay in the city limits?
They're not.
The city ETJ.
ETJ.
I mean, yeah, ETJ, is there, because I feel like there's not, so, and we're, our hands are kind of tied.
To Ms. Suzanne's credit, we did have that conversation. I think for us, the timeline and the process is, is really what it boils down to.
Understand.
That doesn't mean we wouldn't welcome discussions at some point in the future over potential solutions.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I want to say, to your credit, you're, you're probably one of the first ones that actually come in that we're able to actually talk to and, and get a, a good feel for that. So, we've debated as far as, like, in- incentives, or, um, relinquishing our pro- process within the ETJ to improve that to where we just don't, we don't have that, because it's, it's, or to, to lose that, that opportunity, because it's just not only the fact that, that you lose out, it's just basically us losing for, potentially, for, um, other competitors to come out and, and basically reach and grab, and we don't, we don't want that.
Yeah, absolutely, sir, totally understand it. We have the exact opposite situations in other parts of the country, so we're familiar with both this process and the reverse.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Of course, appreciate that, thank you.
No other questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion.
I, I have one comment, one thing I was thinking about how, yes, one thing, how the motion should be. I think there should still be a motion and a second to, to approve the ordinance, and then it's denied, as opposed to move to deny an ordinance, because I know that's how we've done it, and I started thinking and talking to just some other cities on how, how they're doing stuff. So, just, I don't necessarily know that it really makes that big of a difference, because I know that maybe no one wants to put their name on a motion, but if it.
Yeah, if you're making a motion to approve, it almost gives you the sense that you support it, though, and if you second it, that's additional support.
You're.
I think we're splitting hairs.
In Roberts' rules of order, when you make a motion, you're making a motion to put it on the floor to discuss.
Mm-hmm.
So.
You're, yeah. So, I mean, you, if, if you feel more comfortable moving to deny the ordinance, I think that's okay. I just, under Roberts' rules, I think it makes more sense to mo- motion and second, and then everybody deny it if that's your intent, but.
And we keep changing, and Chris keeps getting confused.
You gotta vote the opposite way.
Dang skippy.
All right, I'll do it.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor, move to approve ordinance twenty-five S, an ordinance releasing approximately twenty-two point-five acres of land from the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Alvin, Texas, providing findings and of fact containing a severability clause and providing for other matters related thereto. Anyone?
Second. Please vote.
Motion for approval is denied.
Unanimously?
Unanimously, sorry. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, yeah, thank y'all, we, we appreciate you being here. Um, see, item E, discuss and take record vote to propose an ad valorem tax rate of point-seven-zero-zero-six-three-five cents per one-hundred dollars of assessed valuation for tax year two thousand twenty-five, which equals the no new revenue rate, and call for a public hearing to receive comments on said rate Thursday, September fourth, two thousand twenty-five, at seven o'clock PM in the city council chambers, City Hall, two sixteen, West Seeley, in Alvin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, feels like it's been forever since I talked to you guys. Uh, I'm sure you're tired of hearing me, so I'll keep this one short and sweet. This is just another process, or another step in the process of approving a budget and a tax rate for us. Um, this is a little bit different from previous years, because we are at no new revenue with this particular proposal. Um, anything that's at or below no new revenue doesn't actually require the public hearing, but as a matter of transparency and of good faith for our citizens, we want to have that public hearing so that we are able to hear their comments, concerns, any questions? Um, as I said, in the meeting, we're starting at point-seven-zero-zero-six-three-five, but that number can be anything you'd like it to be, uh, up to the voter approval rate. If you go over that, we have to have the budget ready in, like, three days, so I don't think I can pull that off. I'm happy to entertain any questions or any comments that you weren't able to ask downstairs.
If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Hey, Mayor, can, can we just, uh, just clarify for the citizens, we're not adopting the, the tax rate, just, just wanted to make sure that they, they realize that.
Thank you.
Right, so this is just, like I said in the workshop, that this is saying that we agree that whatever the tax rate is that we eventually propose cannot go above this number here.
That is correct.
Okay.
Your, your proposed rate is usually the highest that you're willing to go, and work down from there if need be, or stay at that level.
So, the actual proposed tax rate could, in, in theory, be lower than this amount if we decide to before the September meeting? Right?
The proposed rate is what we're doing tonight.
I'm sorry, the adopted.
Can be lower, yes, ma'am.
Yes. Okay.
Mayor, uh, move to propose an ad valorem tax rate of zero-point-seven-zero-zero-six-three-five per one-hundred dollars of assessed valuation for tax year two thousand twenty-five, fiscal year October first, two thousand twenty-five, through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, which equals the no new revenue rate, and call for a public hearing to receive comments on said rate on Thursday, September fourth, two thousand twenty-five, at seven PM in the city council chambers, City Hall, two sixteen, West Seeley, Alvin.
Please vote.
Yep, you abstaining? Motion, motion passes with Councilmember Salter voting no.
Item F, uh, discuss proposed amendments to chapter fifteen, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, and chapter seventeen and a half signs of the code of ordinances, city of Alvin, Texas, related to electioneering at polling locations.
Mayor and Council, um, I'm bringing this to you this evening, um, if you recall back in May, the May election cycle, we had some issues at the, um, polling place, so I brought this up for discussion. Um, I just, um, suggesting a few things to add to an ordinance that you'll approve at a later meeting. This is just, again, for discussion, um, some issues that we had, we had a request that they be allowed to have tables under their canopies, which, you know, I, we took the ordinance from another city and kind of just made it fit ours, but, um, Mayor and I went out and had a discussion with the, um, candidates on site, and that was one of their requests. Another request was to allow them to place their signs on their actual canopies, um, and, um, they, they did so during the last, um, cycle, but, um, in this ordinance, proposed ordinance, I would say they asked that it not count, uh, toward their total signs allowed on the, on the property of four. So, and then also, I put, um, to, to make sure that their canopies are weighted down, because we had some issues the, uh, cycle before, that the, they were blowing over. So, those are my recommendations, I wanted to bring it to, um, council for a discussion. I know, um, Councilmembers Salter and Davis, you were out there electioneering. If you had any other comments or considerations, um, I'll just open it up for discussion.
For the record, our tents did not fly across the road.
No, it wasn't them, it was the, the cycle before, in November.
On the, on the signs, on the tents of the tables?
I'm sorry?
Is there a proposed limit on the signs of the tables?
Uh, no, not on, not.
Tents or tables?
Not on the.
I don't think there should be, I was just curious.
And the only thing I think is in here is that they can't, they have to be attached to the tent, like, they can't stick it in the ground around their tent, or, you know, but it has to be affixed to the canopy itself, so.
Okay, so I just have a question.
Sure.
Because one of the candidates had a tent with his name on it, and that doesn't address this. So, at that time, um, I think the permit department was asking him to take down the tent as well, because she said it was a sign, so I just, maybe.
This should fix it, I mean, there shouldn't be a problem.
I was just thinking, because it says signs affixed to the canopy, but it was the actual canopy itself, so I don't know, just maybe the verbiage.
Maybe, I mean, yeah, I can work with Suzanne to wordsmith it a little better, maybe. What, I know.
But just because people might take it apart, yeah.
Well, the reason a lot of these rules were in place was previous candidates in larger positions of office
rolled up goosenecks with, you know, live music and blocked every parking spot that they had, because there was no standard, so, you know, so, I'm glad that there, we were given at the start of the process, we were given a map on what, on, and where we could and couldn't have stuff, and it was very helpful. Um, you know, we can all disagree about the number of signs, but, yeah, I like the standard.
I just, I just want it for clarification, so it's not wasting their time in the future.
Yeah, we can, we can add something in there, yeah, not a problem.
I like the addition of tables, I think that's helpful. Yes.
Yes.
And people eat out there.
Yeah.
People work.
Of course. Yeah.
I had tables, it wasn't part of, I didn't, it wasn't, nobody complained, so I guess it wasn't a problem, so.
Well, and so, when we were out there, when I was out there before, we were all doing that, but since then, we, we've adopted the new spacing and sign count, and we, this part was just kind of left out of.
Yes, we, it was been, it's been in place for over a little, over a year, and so, we're just tweaking it, um, based on some complaints we had the last election cycle, so this will hopefully fix that, but I wanted to bring it to you so you could discuss before I brought a ordinance to you.
I just have one, one question for the, for the recent, the recent, um, elected officials that did electioneering out there. Uh, canopy spaces are available for election one hour before the daily opening of polls and are on a first-come, first-served basis. We had a lot of, I thought we had a lot of, I had several candidates that said, "Man, why, why do we have to take our tents down, why can't we just lower them, you know, keep them, keep them weighted down and just, just lower them all the way, that way we're not having to pick them up?" And, and I explained that, that we had one that, that got away and, and ended up, you know, across the, the museum park, I mean, the, the library parking lot, and nobody claimed it, and the, the candidate had to know his, his, his tent was missing, but is that, did y'all, did y'all feel like, like having to put your tent up and take it down every, every day was, was a hassle?
The tent, not as much of an issue, because they, they go up pretty quickly, but the, uh, claiming of your spot, definitely, I think, I think, I think if you were able to establish at the start of the week, or at the start of early voting, "Hey, I got here, I got up at four AM and idled my car for four hours in the public parking lot to get it," you know, but that's the whole point, is that it wa- it was exhausting for us to, to potentially fight over spaces every single day, um, with a variety of, not just this own election, there was a school board, there was other elections going on, you know, so one day you might have polling workers for other. So, one day you might have polling workers for other races that, you know, I know we had Freeport out there for a little while for the port, you know, so it was just. Uh, it it was exhausting to constantly have to compete for spacing, you know. Because the rules were established for the one canopy, we weren't exactly fighting over space, but we were fighting over where you were spaced, for sure. Um, but I don't know. That's a, that's a tough thing to do, you know, you know. Meet Dixie at her office with a a notepad to get your name written down first for what spots you get, and it's it's a hard thing to enforce, I think. Um, so. But I I definitely agree with the other. Yeah, but nobody, in reality, yes, leaving your tent, but the moment it rains or anything, you're gonna, and that happened. We were, we at, we had rain in the middle of the day, and about half of us took our tents and half of us didn't, and those who didn't, their tents were ruined. Because of the weight of the water and everything else on them, um, you know, so i- it's, I think it's more about prioritization of of. First come, first served for the week or something for that spacing. To me, if I was to, if I was to race again, that would be most. That would make the most im- positive impact for me, I would have said than doing the 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 work of putting up a tent or down.
I think putting up the tent, it wasn't really an issue. Um, taking it down every day, it's very quick. I I had no issue with it. Um, I didn't really have an issue with the parking so much either because I showed up later than them. I wasn't out there at four or five o'clock in the morning, and I took the one that was, you could see it when people were driving, so. You know, that worked for me. It wasn't an issue either, so I didn't think of it as a problem.
I also think a lot of these rules have to do with the county and the state on the distance from the door. Because that line was also changing. I think it's seventy-five foot or a hundred foot, so. So, if that, that line was right at that first tent spot where I was a lot, if that distance expands a little bit, just like that. We're gonna lose where we can even allocate people, so it's it's, it's an ongoing issue, I'm sure. But I appreciate the the good conversation. I appreciate they, them coming out whenever we had questions about the signage.
Pretty good. Uh, you'll bring this back next meeting?
I'll bring it back, uh, next meeting with these changes incorporated.
Thank you, Dixie.
Yep.
Anything else from council? Good. Then we'll move on to item G, consider if any requests from individual council members. Garvey?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, I do have something. So, uh, we we saw the outstanding officers who had their badges pinned on their uniforms. And I think that badge has a lot of weight to it, and there's a lot of expectations for officers as there is for other first responders. But I also think that when city employees wear their uniform or their shirt with their logo on it, that still carries some weight. We have expectations for all of our city employees, and the fire department, I know, and so does the police department. They have standards in their handbook by law guidelines about consuming alcohol in the city in uniform. Um, uh, and really, they're not allowed to be doing that. So, I I would love to encourage our city attorney to look at the language. Uh, to see about when employees come on or when they promote, just amending their handbook. To have some type of guideline or standard that says, if you're in uniform, if you're wearing a city logo, you should not be consuming. In the city. Um, uh, it's like you're still on the clock if you got your work shirt on, kind of thing. If you want to go uh, to a barbecue and you want to have a great time with your friends, I'm all for that, but I uh. I just encourage that standard and and hope that we could, I encourage you guys to to head that direction where if you're in uniform. Um, you don't consume. Um, if you want to change your shirt, go for it. Um, and do your thing within the law. Um, but just kind of my recommendation. And I did email and ask.
I've always had to flip my shirt inside out, something if I went out and did something.
So, we see Chris with his shirt inside out.
Well, anything that had a logo of the of the business or wherever I was working at, even, because it's in my handbook too. So, I mean, it's, you can't have that and be out drinking and doing anything.
Thank you.
You serve beer for me.
Yeah, just real quick, just because we were talking about it earlier, um, I would like for the council to have a refresher on the Robert Rules of Order. Can we do that?
Point of order.
I think that would be helpful for us, so you can figure out exactly.
We had a line.
How to vote and win and all those uh, you know, details. I think that'll be good.
We'll consider it.
And really quick, if I can just make a point of order. Um, the way the agenda reads is for items on the next council meeting. Are, for this, are you, are you okay, just for a future meeting? And then, yeah, we can, we can look.
Whenever.
Either a workshop, like maybe after the budget season, maybe, and maybe do a workshop on 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 that.
I just wanted to say it before it lost, before I forgot about it.
For the workshop?
Of course I will.
Just making sure.
Give me any excuse to bake.
Okay. Ashley, thank you. Okay, well, let's see. Reports from City Manager.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Just a reminder, on Tuesday, August twelfth, we have a budget workshop at six P M. Uh, dinner will be served at five thirty P M. Uh, August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, if. The city council meeting, we have a few items already set. Uh, the police department is doing their annual update. Uh, we have a budget, public hearing. Uh, we will bring to you the water. Uh, sewer and sanitation rate ordinances and um. If if everything pans out, uh, we 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 will bring to you the uh, architect that, who will be assigned to the uh. Construction of the, or the design of of the city hall. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Well, uh, let's see then, items of community interest. Starting with you, Councilmember Davis, anything?
Fire and EMS open house is October fourth, from ten to two.
Big day. Thank you. Anything?
School starts next week. Good luck to all the kids that are going back to school. I now have a senior that's gonna be, another one, uh, senior that's gonna be in high school, so y'all gotta say a small little prayer. My youngest daughter now drives and is gonna be driving to school, so you need to say an extra prayer for that one. And then it's homecoming season, so. Y'all send me some money so I can make some homecoming mums.
Next. Garvey?
No, Mayor.
Alright, very good. Well, then we are going to adjourn into executive session, uh, for two things. Section five five one oh seven two, the local government code, uh, that is providing, let's see, where am I lost my notes? Uh, deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real properties in section five five one oh seven four. Double deliberation of the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duty, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer of employee. So, the time being eight oh seven, we will adjourn into executive session.
And uh.
We have to take action on the first, uh, first meeting.
Well, does somebody make a motion?
I don't remember what the thing is.
Read it.
Moving to approve the business incentive grants, Grazia, fifty thousand dollars, continue to the bond.
Pending the review of the agreement.
Yeah.
This is your.
She's doing this.
I'll take it.
Do you know what he said?
Okay, uh, mayor, move to approve the business incentive request for Grazia craft kitchen and cocktails in the amount of fifty thousand dollars pending review of three eighty agreement.
Second.
All vote please. Omar.
Omar.
Motion passes you name.
Look at that, you do. There it is. Thank you for your participation.